Welcome all to this record meeting of the Lennox Township Board of Trustees, March 7th, 2022, at 6:32 PM. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Approval of meeting agenda.
We have to add fire department insurance conference request and the fire department extrication tool idonico purchase request.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda with adding J and K for the fire department.
Second. I have motioned by trustee Gurley, supported by trustee Clifford. Independent court please call roll.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Hawn?
Aye.
Approval of meeting minutes.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from February 7th, 2022, and February 28th, 2022.
Second.
I have motioned by trustee Gurley, supported by treasurer Hawn. Independent court please call roll.
Gurley?
Aye.
Hawn?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Public announcements. Public comment. If anyone would like to speak, this would be the time.
Speak out anything?
Yep. If you can go up to the podium, please.
To the microphone, please. State your name and address.
And I'll remind you, you have a three minute.
I'll do it again, and then I'll hand you whatever's left. All right, our main concern is the road we live on. I live on 367 by 927 mile. My name is Tom Burgess. Our main concern is ambulances, fire department, and anything so forth getting down our road. We cannot even drive down our road without going five miles an hour, 10 miles an hour, without killing our vehicles. I have multiple pictures of the road flooding over. The ditches are, the water cannot get to the ditches because the roads are crowned toward the ditch. Water cannot get into the ditches, even if anything. You know, they're like three to five inches higher on the edge of the ditches. The water sits in the road, which eats road up. The ditches need to be cleaned, the culverts need to be cleaned, debris needs to be cleaned out of the ditches. People are dumping stuff. I had to call the police last Sunday because the road was impassable. I called the county 16 times that week. I couldn't even drive my truck halfway down between Frost and Gresham. The way people drive down our road, somebody's gonna get killed because there's ruts six to 10 inches deep. The roads cannot even, you can't even drive down, down at half the time. And I don't know what we can do. We need your help to help us get even, and all these streets cleaned up. The ditches need to be done, the roads need to be done. We need gravel brought in, we need the stuff done properly. I had the ditches, the tops of the ditches done two years ago. The road was fine for a full year until the road crew pushed all the gravel on the sides of the roads again and made it to where the ditches don't collect any of the water. It was great two years ago. It went to crap again last year and this year. We just need your help. That's all we need. We call every day. Everybody here needs to call every day. Call McComb County Road Commission every day, three, four times a day, as many times as you can. Call. It's the only way we're gonna get something done. I did it on 25 month. I called them 15 times. I had all the farmers in the area call it like a year and a half ago. They dug the ditches out. Water flow is fine. Wow, they only have to grade it two times, three times a year now. I mean, it's, isn't a brain scientist. Do the stuff properly, and then it'll actually cost you less in the long run. I don't know what else to say. We need help from you guys. Yeah, that's why I said, all the roads. We need help with all the roads.
They all need to be dug out, they all need grading, they all need stone. All the roads are covered with the ditches.
I know, that's why we're here, that's why I put this sign out. That's why I'm trying to get as many people here to help. Because if you guys don't call, we need to get nothing done. We need, you get more in a group than one or two people mention. Even if all of us run down to McComb County one day, petition out in front of them, I don't care what we do.
Sir, let's try and get stuff done. Figure that's fine.
Sounds good. Can I bring you some pictures, hold it there?
Of course.
A letter from our wife. I'll see if, you know, maybe this is helpful to our user.
Thank you.
This is signed from me and my mother. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm gonna do a follow-up for what you guys just talked about, same reason I'm here. Name's Wayne Zissack, I live in 586 Bro, Frost Road, South 27. What I've seen from living here 21 years, we had some old guys grading a long time ago, crowded the road, did a decent job. I don't know if how much the township is involved with responsibility for the roads, or if it's all the public community that's with you there.
This is not a Q and A session.
Okay.
We will be able to ask your questions during coffee.
All right. The main thing is, the roads are not being taken care of properly at all in the following part. If you go online, get gravel road maintenance, all the information is there on how to do it properly. There was even on February 23rd, 2011, Michigan County Engineers Conference, they laid out a 40-page report of how to properly grade, maintain a road, with the right materials, the right drainage, the right slope. If we need to get this over to whoever's in charge of the roads, maybe they just need to be educated how to do it. I don't know, but we need to do something with it. So you tell me later, give me an email address to send it to. Let's get to the right people, get it done right. And if it's done right, they'll work me out two, three times a year, it'll be great. That's it. They'll save a ton of money. That's all I got. Tom Whitstone, 365727 mile. I've been out there for 27 years, and it's the worst I've ever seen. The road commission, they come out there and they scrape it, and it gets worse because they're scraping it. This time of the year, if it's a frost, it becomes nothing but a Martian muck. They're doing it at the wrong time.
Actually, they're doing it when it rains. They're doing it on a rainy day.
Exactly.
They like put us on a rain day screen, is what you do.
It's awful. That's all I have to say.
Hi. Dave Bolling, 35431, 27 mile road. Same thing. They scrape it when it's wet, frost coming out of the ground, I understand that. But it's a disaster. Please help us. I was told you guys could provide limestone, the county would spread it. Please, if you guys can help us in any way, I would really greatly appreciate it. Clean the ditches out there, disaster. It's a disaster down there. I've been there a resident for six years in that home. I've never seen it so bad, I don't know what else to do. I scraped myself with my tractor, I know I'm not supposed to, but this is a mess. So, please help us, thank you.
Good evening. Mark Mauer, 57320 Place Road. Picking me back on what they just said, the road is a mess. I got pictures right here today, taken today, so you can see what the road looks like in front of my house. They know more about grading and all this stuff. I don't know all that, but I can tell you that the road is a mess. So if you want to see these pictures, you're welcome.
Jerry Harris, 58450 Place Road, between 26 and 27. I've lived there for over 30 years. In the last 10 to 15 years, there's no crown on the road. Instead of bringing out stone, gravel out there to grade, it finds out it's dust. And the first time they grade it, it turns into mud. And it happens every time they grade it, especially when it's raining. You cannot grade a muddy road. And they don't understand that, or they don't care. We need to get somebody who's gonna pay attention and has the knowledge to grade it, and when to grade it, and how to do it. Because sometimes you've got a crown, other times they push the gravel aside, and then you're kind of caving, little water lays there. Somebody's gotta teach these people how to grade the road. Thank you.
Consent agenda. All items listed on this consent agenda are considered.
Yeah, I've been on.
Oh, go ahead, gentlemen, sir, I'm sorry.
I've been an excavator for 25 years. And I, James Wolf, 27603, 29 mile. And us as contractors, we could never get away with doing work the way these people do work out there. We're helped to an inspector's, you know, book to do it. The way this county takes care of these roads is ridiculous. Right now, when they do grade the road, we got four inches of mud when they do finally get it graded up. It needs to be all graded, hauled away, and good stone brought in. And then the ditches are just, every ditch, every culvert's half full, along 29, long place, everywhere out there. You maybe see a road grader once a month. You know, this is getting bad. My wife, she's gotta drive her, our kids to school merit down, down 29 mile road four times a day. The car's thick in a beating. I mean, this, something's gotta be done here. Thanks.
Ted Carpen, 57957 Place Road, between 26 and 27 mile. Thank you, people need to take in a help from everybody who's saying here today. If you guys want these elected officials, again, next time election comes around, we need your help. It's ridiculous between that certain road. You already said, it's absolutely disgusting. Thank you.
We are all for you guys to work for us. If you want your jobs, work for us, help us, we'll all for you. If you don't, we'll get somebody else to do it next time.
Taryn Hoytington-Mauer, 57320 Place. I want to thank first Jerry Harris for inviting us out to this meeting. I'm aware of the meeting every month, but it's not attended. I've only been out here for five years. The road is undrivable. Like the gentleman mentioned, five miles an hour. That extra time to whatever location I have to be at. Putting damage on my vehicle, which I just purchased, and I'm not sure who's gonna pay for the repairs in the event I need to have the undercarriage or the tires fixed. I'm not sure exactly who is accountable. You said this isn't a Q and A, I get that. But we need answers as to who is exactly responsible for getting these roads fixed the way that they should to be drivable. I'm not sure what road each of you live on, and/or if you have to drive on dirt roads. In the event that you do, I would like to see your votes, to see what they look like. You are elected officials. These are the people, and just a handful. And not everybody is comfortable bringing up an issue that is very uncomfortable to talk into a roomful of people. But again, thank you to Jerry. Very upset with the way the township has handled these roads. And very much feel that you are each accountable for getting this issue resolved as quickly as possible. Thank you for your time.
Should be able to answer who is accountable for the roads.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Consent agenda. All items listed on this consent agenda are considered routine by the township board and will be enacted by one motion. According to established township meeting rules, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the board or public soul requests that or prior to the meeting. In which event, the chair of the meeting may remove such items from the consent agenda for discussion and consideration under agenda item number eight below. Approval of the consent agenda shall be a majority roll call vote with those present in voting.
We have orders and bills in the amount of $245,047.69.
I make a motion to accept consent agenda with orders and bills in the amount of, I can't tell.
I'll second.
I have motioned by trustee Clifford, supported by treasurer Hawn. Independent court please call roll.
Clifford? Hawn?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Items removed from consent agenda, public safety report, new firefighter ceremony. Mr. White.
Good evening. For purposes of the audience who we have tonight, we don't always have one. So it's nice to say, my name is Jeff White. I'm the public safety director for Lennox Township. I have with me tonight, as members of the fire department, a probationary firefighter, that will not be probationary any longer, seeming, and our fire chief, Marty Hurry. So just wanted to recognize all of them and let you know who is here tonight. We are formally squaring in. A gentleman who has joined our fire department now over a year ago, completed all of his training, and is now prepared to be presented with his badge and sworn in as a member of the Lennox Township Fire Department. It's with pleasure of the day I introduce to you firefighter Dustin Krieger. Tonight is the final step in over a year of training, which takes Dustin from the probationary status to active part-paid professional firefighter. I'll now administer the oath, and Chief Hartway will present firefighter Krieger with his badge. Dustin, please raise your right hand and answer I do to the following questions. I recognize at all times, I am a public servant, and ultimately, I am responsible for the safety and well-being of myself, my colleagues, and all our citizens.
I do.
I will accept responsibility for my actions by exhibiting honesty and integrity.
I will.
I will promote diversity within our organization to ensure fair and open access to all who call for service.
I do.
I will observe the highest principles of fairness to strive to meet those values, which reflect honor upon the township and myself.
I do.
I will seek to maintain and improve my professional knowledge, skills, and confidence.
I do.
Now, do you swear to follow and uphold all Department SOPs, state and federal laws, as well as the state of Michigan and United States Constitution?
I do.
Finally, do you affirm you will not permit or cause any employee or agent acting on your behalf to do anything which would constitute a violation of this oath?
I do.
Chief? All right, here. And for all of them in the room, we have a group of people that have been very afraid of a microphone, but more importantly, I've never afraid of telling you what a wonderful job our public safety officials do in this community. Whether it's been our sheriff's deputies, our EMS professionals, or our firefighters, the last two years of most of our careers, and a number of us in the room have kind of logged in somewhat storied careers in this community, it's been the toughest two years of our lives. We have dealt with the horrors of a pandemic that have taken the lives, caused economic suffering to probably every single member sitting in this room in one shape, shape, or form. And for that, I'm very sorry. I'm only sorry that we didn't do more. But what I really want to do is just take a moment and recognize the amount of women that are here tonight who stealthlessly responded to calls early on in this pandemic, not even knowing what we were dealing with. Taking infection home to themselves, their families, their children. Then healing, coming back, and some of them getting infected again. This is what they've been through for the past two years. And I think I just wanted to take a minute to ask you all to indulge me and share with all of them, like I say, our sheriffs, our EMS folks, our firefighters right here tonight. One more round of applause if you would. Thank you all for being here this evening. Township board members and citizens at large, on behalf of Lennox Township Public Safety Department, it's not my privilege to formally introduce you our new sworn professional, who I attest is fully prepared to serve you and our citizens going forward. Thank you very much.
Item J supervisors report 2020-2021 UHY LLC audit presentation.
Hello, good evening. My name is Karen Trieffe, and I'm a partner at UHY. We came out a few months ago to do the audit, and I just want to thank you for allowing me here tonight to present the results of the audit. So hopefully you guys have it all in front of you. The report begins with the independent auditor's report. This really is the only piece of that report that is UHY's. They are your statements. You do have an unmodified opinion, however. It is a clean opinion and the best that you can get in what you strive for each year. The next part of that report is the management's discussion and analysis. This really gives a good narrative of the activities of the township over the last year, and some things to look forward to in the upcoming years. The next part of the report there is the entity-wide financial statements. This shows all assets liabilities of the township, really kind of looking at the township as if it were a business. And then the next part, which we'll spend a little bit more time on, is really with the fund financial statements, and how you really look at the operations of the township on an ongoing basis. We'll really start with your general fund. At the year end, June 30th of 21, the general fund had assets of $2,571,844. Liabilities were at $487,673. And deferred inflows of resources were at $9,574. The funding remaining of the general fund at June 30th was $2,074,597. This was a decrease from the year prior of $62,701. The fund balance of the general fund is broken up into a few different restrictions, if you will. One piece is unspendable of $59,991. Assigned fund balance was just over $1,303,357, leaving unassigned fund balance of $713,249, which really can be used for any operations of the township. The other funds of the township, governmental funds anyway, are special revenue funds, and then some debt service, or a debt service fund. So the special revenue funds consisted of the road fund, which ended with fund balance of $1,724,508. That was an increase of $161,711 from the year prior. The fire fund had $1,807,202, which was an increase of $135,501 from the year prior. And then the PTA revenue fund had $13,626,414. That was an increase of $1,834,384 from the year. And then there was a liquor law enforcement fund with a charitable fund balance of $45,167, and the monitoring fee fund of $48,289 at year end. The debt service fund is the Chapter 23 fund. That is a restricted fund at year end that had $33,415 in fund balance. The remaining fund of the township is the water and sewer fund, or water supply and sewage disposal system fund. The change in net position for this fund for the year was $1,006,51. And working cap, or net working capital at year end was at $11,687. Attached with the report, or with the audit report, there are two letters. There is a report on internal control, as well as an audit communication letter. We did go over that with management when we went through the financial statements in much more detail than this. And I just want to let you know that those are attached as well. Anyway, I know there's a lot of information that I went through very, very quickly. If there are any questions, I'd be very happy to answer. Thank you.
Item 98, unfinished business gypsy moth control.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I'm Terry Gibb, and I'm a senior extension educator with MSU Extension. And first, let me apologize. I had a total brain blank last month, and just no excuse to simply miss the meeting. So I really appreciate you having me back to talk to you about this. I've been administering what we used to call the gypsy moth program for the county since 1992 when it first began. And normally here in the county, we have hotspots. We don't have huge thousands of egg with racks that we spray like they do up in the northern counties of our state. Limantria dysparvica, that is the scientific name of gypsy moth. And back in July of 2021, it was determined that the term gypsy moth might be offensive to some of Romanian populations, so they quit using it. They now are referring to it either as limantria dysparvica moth, or they're now calling it spongy moth. And the reason they call it spongy moth is because of the egg masses, the egg masses that they deposit, which caused all of us a lot of trouble. The spongy moth is a foreign pest with few native predators that keep the population in check throughout the United States. It was first founded in Michigan in 1954, and we started seeing real insignificant outbreaks of this pest in the 1980s. These caterpillars feed on tree leaves, and they prefer oaks, aspen, poplar, and birch, but will feed on 500 different varieties of trees. I mean, they'll eat whatever's available, as we say. Let me tell you what it doesn't do. It does not cause premature leaf drop. It does not cause browning of or curling of leaves. They do not make webs or tents in the trees. So if you see any of this, you don't necessarily have gypsy moth. What they do do is they can defoliate trees, and they have been known to defoliate entire wooded areas. If anybody was in Memphis last summer, July, August, and went down Main Street, it looked, the trees looked like it was the middle of January. It totally defoliated all the trees up there. And they can be a real nuisance in residential neighborhoods. Gypsy moth cannot be eradicated. That's why we call it a suppression program. And what we do is we try to suppress the populations down because it is a cyclical past. It increases, it increases, until it gets so high that it crashes, and then it drops way down, and then it builds, and builds, and builds, until it crashes. So, and what we try to do with this program is to eliminate the really high and And what we try to do with this program is to eliminate the really high and the really low and keep it in that tolerable middle range. Tree defoliation by the caterpillars is one of the big issues. That's what we see most, and it can have a real significant negative impact on tree health and potentially property values. Trees defoliated more than 40% become stressed, and they use their overwinter reserves to re-leaf. So if they're defoliated more than 40%, they will re-leaf and everything will look nice. But what it's done is it's used its winter reserves to have that re-leaf, and then that stresses the tree. I say this, and I'll say this, gypsy moth, I'm sorry, I've been doing this for third years, it's gonna be gypsy moth. Gypsy moth does not kill trees. What it does is it stresses the trees enough and allows predators and other viruses to then attack the tree, and that's what eventually kills the tree. All right? But if it didn't have this issue with the gypsy moth, it wouldn't be doing it. Healthy trees, you know, can withstand several years of this defoliation, but evergreens, unfortunately, do not re-leaf, so if they are defoliated, they die, that's it. In addition to the damage to the trees, gypsy moth caterpillars can be a nuisance if the populations are high enough. The caterpillars and their frass or feces can drop down from the trees, onto the sidewalks, on the patios, onto people's heads if they're walking in the area, porches, vehicles. It can stain decks, it can stain your furniture, and also can cause allergic reactions in a small segment of the population. If you've never seen the caterpillar, it's really ugly, but it has all these hairs on it, and those hairs are what cause the allergic reaction. What we use to control this is a product called Bacillus thuringensis variety cursac or BTK. This BT is a naturally occurring bacteria found in soil and has been used for gypsy moth control in the Northeast since 1961 and in Michigan since 1985. It is also, I learned recently, used in a lot of organic farming. How many, either by accident or on purpose, may have eaten dirt as a kid? Anybody? They've eaten BT because it's in the soil. All right. BT specifically targets only caterpillars of a certain size. It is applied when the caterpillars are young. Size is defined as instar, instar 1, instar 2. We try to spray between the second and third instar because that will give us the greatest impact on reducing these caterpillars. Because the caterpillars are large enough that they're moving up into the trees to feed on the canopy, but they're still small enough that it cannot resist the bacteria killing it. At the same time, and this is important, this BT will not harm humans, pests, birds, fish, butterflies, plants, beneficial insects, or even other moths. It is very target-specific. We also recommend alternative methods for control if trees on the property, you don't have more than a few. And that, you know, egg mass raping, which can be done right now, tree banding, either sticky bands or the burlong wraps, and all of those, and then good tree health. Keeping your trees watered during drought, keeping them fertilized will also help to withstand a gypsy moth infestation. So what we do is we recommend a combination of efforts to get this done. Lennox Township was surveyed because we got a call from a resident, and we went out, and it turns out that Lennox, I think this is the first time ever I've been here for this since 1992, and you have one spray block, it's 58.06 acres, and it's in the 30-mile west of county line area. I think I sent you the maps, yes? Yes. And so I am using last year's spray estimate of $145 an acre. So if you take $145 and multiply it times 58.06 acres, that comes up to $8,418.70. And the reason I'm using the $145 an acre as opposed to the slightly lower cost that I verbally got from the applicator is because if some communities choose not to spray, and we did have one community last year that voted not to spray, that could impact the acres. Obviously, the more acres, the lower the price, so that will be a little bit of an impact. Currently, we've identified 16 spray blocks in seven communities. That's nearly 1,300 acres, which by Roscommon standards is nothing. They sprayed 30,000 acres last year. But it's still a lot, and the fact that we only sprayed residential areas and park areas shows the significance that this means. Now, how the program will work is if you decide to join the program, you vote to do this, then I will be handling all the stuff for you. Each community is responsible for their own spray costs. The county covers all the administration costs. That means we did the fall survey, moved through the monitoring, the spraying, map creation, taking care of the, making sure the congested air permits are taken care of, the contracts are signed, you know, pre-spray, monitoring, and post-spray activities. And what we discovered, the reason I said post-spray activities is we usually do a defoliation survey, usually the end of July, early August. And remember, I said we try to keep defoliation under 40%? We surveyed spray blocks in every community that was sprayed this last year, and the defoliation rate was between 10 and 15%. So we were very happy with that. And we have been, that's been about that every year, so we've been really successful with keeping on top of this. MSU Extension and Macomb County also have a variety of web resources on its webpage. There are fact sheets, brochures, there's even a webinar that we did a year or so ago that people can view. If you just Google macomb.gov.org and then in the search box put gypsy moth, our page will pop up, and there's all kinds of things there. All of the stuff that is there is usable, it's public domain. If you want to put that on your website or print off some of the things and keep it here, you're more than welcome to do that. That's really all I have. Any questions?
Just curious, how is it, is it sprayed just with the back x spray?
Pardon me?
How do you apply?
It's an aerial spray. I'm sorry, it's an aerial spray. And the reason being is so that we can get it up in the canopy, and it is, the VT is in what we call a sticky substance, so that it's sprayed, it lands on the leaves, and it sticks to them. And once it's dry, they go up, they feed on it, and they kill it. BT is not a contact spray, and they have to ingest it. So that's why we do that. If the areas are small enough and the trees are not super tall, there can be, I do know a couple of communities that do a ground spray using...
But it's done by airplane?
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, the ground spray is usually, you know, you use Jerry Kipper type thing, and they can take it up there, but we're right now looking at an aerial spray.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to make the motion to approve MSU Extension Macomb County's recommendation of spraying the gypsy moth infestation area near 30-mile road and county line at the cost not to exceed $10,000.
Second.
I have a motion by Chairwoman Turner. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll.
Reader?
Aye.
Powell?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Item 10, new business, A.T.J.M. Enterprises LLC Annual Mining Permit with No Limit. Mr. Cassidy.
This request was before the planning commission meeting, for the planning commission, by which we can go. It's an annual request to renew their special land use permit and provide detailed calculations on their mining operation. That was a recommended approval by the planning commission and is now up to the Township Board. Mr. Servet, Mr. Safe, may I have some additional information?
Thanks, Steve. Good evening. This is an annual renewal request by T.J. Enterprises under their current mining permit, so they are in front of the board for renewal at 90% completion of their original permit.
I make a motion we renew the annual mining permit renewal request forward by T.J. Enterprises at 90% to continue.
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Clifford, second by trustee Gurley. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Powell?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye. Item B, DPW truck purchase request. Mr. Trump.
Good evening, everybody. Decided we've had on our budget requests for the past few years, it's been quite a difficult task getting to this point, believe it or not, just trying to get pricing, not only because of the pandemic, but even just prior to that. Demand was very high, stock was very low, we've had shortages because of the pandemic and so forth. Recently, I was able to get some prices on a replacement for this vehicle. The current vehicle we have is a 2006, has 66,000 miles on it, so we've had that vehicle in service for 16 years, and it's actually done us very well. Using it as a daily vehicle on top of using it for salt applications during winter has really taken its toll, and I really need to replace this truck this year, if possible, before it really fails us. The undercarriage is really starting to rust and give away in certain areas, and I'm starting to feel like if we let it go any longer, it's going to become unsafe. So what I've been able to do, and what I've been able to collect up to this point, I was able to acquire a quote from the dealer for a cabin chassis, and then also a quote from an outfitter to construct and install the dump body and the salt spreader. Basically, we'd be replacing exactly what we have currently, but because the pricing is so ever-changing, I mean, they hesitated giving me these quotes, and they kept stressing prices are going to change. You know, how quick are you going to be able to do this? Currently, right now, with these two quotes, we're looking at roughly $92,000 for this vehicle. Because of this, and not having to come back, I'm asking for approval to spend $100,000, not to exceed $100,000 of this time for this vehicle.
You allowed for that, Cam, in this year's budget too?
Yes, we've actually had it in our budget for the last three to four years, I believe.
I thought so. I make a motion we allow Cam to pursue these quotes at not over $100,000 for the dump truck and its setup, so to speak, to use for plowing and salting.
I'll second that motion. I have a motion by trustee Clifford, second by the Chair. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Powell?
Aye.
Item C, fertilization program report.
This request is basically a renewal with TruGreen. We've utilized TruGreen for, I believe, the last 11 years, not only at this complex, but both fire stations. They apply two applications of weed and feed as well as fertilization per year. I believe we've only ever seen one cost increase since we started this, and to my knowledge, the price has only gone up about $200. This year, they are holding their prices for us. I would like to extend this contract for another three years with TruGreen. They've done an exceptional job for us, have always responded when we did have a problem. The cost of this service would be $2,696 per year for two applications, per year.
I will make a motion we approve TruGreen to provide fertilization services for 22 and 25 season, season 2022 to 2025, to the lawns at Fire Station Number One, municipal offices in the park for a total cost of $2,696.30 for two applications at each location.
Second.
I have a motion by Chairwoman House, supported by trustee Clifford. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll.
Powell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley? Aye.
Resident request for connection fee deferment.
This item is actually, there's actually two different parts to it, and I really believe we need to do the, the first part would be the deferment of all connection fees when a residential hookup is requested, if so desired. What that would incur, I should back up, in back in the beginning, when we imposed these fees for bar service connections, we did allow residents to apply the lateral benefit fees to their taxes over a 10-year period. With that, there was also an interest rate that was charged. It was the current prime rate plus one. That's, we've probably had at least, probably six or eight different people utilize this over the years. As most of you know, we're in the middle of doing Frost Road Water Mining Extension right now, and then I've had some conversations with some residents that were asking about all the fees. The rest of the fees would be the tapping fee, system development fee, and then of course, the meter cost on top of that. So first, I would need the Board to approve allowing all fees be applied to their taxes over a 10-year period with an interest rate of current prime plus one. These are residential, residential enterprises. What this is solely designed for is to help ease the burden hardship on the residents that would like to hook up to the water system.
And we've been doing this for...
I believe the first, I believe the first five years, our lateral corrections were a dollar a foot when we first started the water system, and then there was a drop dead date where people needed to hook up in order to get that benefit. After that, lateral benefit fees, lateral benefit fees went up to $25 a foot, and they are still at $25 a foot today. So once it went to 25, that's when we started this program.
I make a motion we approve the, being able to roll those fees into their taxes, that would be applied to, I don't know if this is the right way, I suppose, into the taxes and at prime rate plus one percent additionally. Over 10 years, correct?
Yeah, 10 years, over 10 years.
I have a motion by trustee Clifford, second by trustee Gurley. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Powell?
Aye.
Part two of this agenda, attached to that, to the proposal, was a letter that I received from a...
his fees to be applied to his taxes for the next ten years. He, if he's unable to apply all of those fees, he wasn't going to be able to hook up at this time. This would be the normal route we would take when somebody would request this, you would ask them the right letter to the board for consideration, and you would vote on each one individually.
I will make a motion that we allow Mark Gladys at five eight two five zero Frost Road to defer his payments for ten years added onto his taxes.
Second.
I have a motion by treasurer Howl, supported by trustee Gurley, may the deputy clerk, please call the roll.
Howl?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Howl?
Aye.
Item E, resident request to the building department, Mr. Lemieux.
Good evening, members of the board. We have a Mr. and Mrs. Barca in six six zero one one Low Plank, they're requesting that they live in their existing home while they're building a brand-new home. That's for your consideration currently. Our zoning ordinance does not allow two homes to exist on one lot. So my recommendation, if the board would allow this exception, is to have a notarized and recorded agreement to remove the old home within thirty days of issuance of a certificate of occupancy on the new home, and that a bond be posted with Lennox Township in the amount approved by the board. A typical bond for a new home is one thousand dollars. The approval agreement would be for one year, and homeowner would need to request an extension from the board if it went beyond one year.
Mr. Lemieux, I have one question. It said, in that letter to you from Mr. Barca, it says the, the address for the new build is six six zero one one Low Plank. Why is that address changing? If he's building on the same lot, why, why would the address change?
He, he's going to have the same address.
The address for the new build that says six six zero one one?
Oh, that, that's a good question. We may, we may have to visit that, but the real point is that he's going to be building a home on a, where an existing home exists, so two, two homes cannot stay on one lot.
Well, yeah, but in this agreement, they're tearing the other one down, right?
Correct.
Well, I personally don't have a problem with doing that, leaving the same address, but you can see where I'm going with the property split. You know, I don't want them to split it to have two separate lots here.
I believe that's Mr. Barca, Mr. Barca's.
I don't know why I worded it that way. I apologize. It's, it's going to be the same address, it's just we're.
Okay, there's no intention of splitting the lot into two, okay.
He has six acres right now, so even, like you said, he's going to keep it, just build a brand-new home, live in the existing home, and then when he's complete, gets a CMO, and then he can tear that house down within thirty days.
Mr. Lemieux, are you looking at also adding a bond for the demo?
I don't know what would do with a bond for the demo.
Okay. And is that a thousand dollars also?
It could be. I have to ask if he wants the dollar amount of that.
Okay.
I, I don't have a problem with that, as long as there's no plans on splitting the property and going there, but, okay, I'm good.
I'd like to make a motion that we follow the building official, Dennis Leus' recommendation for allowing the property owners at six six zero one one Low Plank to live in their existing home while they build a new home on the same parcel with the following stipulations. A signed notarized agreement to remove the old home within thirty days of an issue of certificate of occupancy, a bond posted with the Lennox Township in the amount approved by the board, typically a new home bond is a thousand dollars, and the agreement shall be in effect for one year. The homeowner must request an extension if needed from the board.
I'll second.
I have a motion by trustee Gurley, supported by treasurer Howl, may the deputy clerk, please call the roll.
Gurley?
Aye.
Howl?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item F, twenty twenty-two limestone program location recommendations, Mr. Graywell.
Good evening, board of trustees, residents. This evening, we're going to be coming forward from the supervisor's office, along with input from, well, Mr. Graywell, let me interject here. At this time, would you explain to the residents, this is not a, this is not a limestone program that we would use in the wintertime, this is something we sign up, go ahead. Do you? All right. Let me back up, and I'll do a little adjustment for the residents. This is something we do every year annually throughout Lennox Township. We've got a large chart that's been handled by Mr. Trombley and our DPW department that keeps track and records of each street that's been limestone upgraded. We've got history and charts going back to, I believe, early two thousand, early two thousands. So this is something that we work out and project. Let me clarify this real clear before we get into this. This is not in response to this evening's attendance, our recommendations, although we have been working on this for quite a while, and based on the charts, interesting enough, the roads that are in the most irreparable shape are scheduled to be looked at for limestone this year. This is, the limestone project goes into a lot of background information. Your township puts money into this project so that the county actually enhances the roads. I want to make sure that's clear.
You correct me if I'm wrong, but maybe Mr. Trombley can confer this. We do, when we do this, we remove the existing road gravel and replace it with twenty-one A. And we've been doing, I believe, Cam, three miles every, every summer on this program. It's just something we, we've been doing. The other, the other things you guys are complaining about, I'm, I'm well behind you, and I, I agree with you, so.
Trustee Clifford, we are going to continue with additional information for you guys this evening. We've been working diligently since last week, this week. There's a lot going on with the roads, and trust me, we are there with you. We are completely supporting you from all offices, trying to get these things done. The limestone project is crucial for us to get the beds and the roads back into place. The township participates in the program based upon the three miles of limestone. The cost is actually extremely favorable compared to what it would cost otherwise. So this evening, we are actually in front of this board, asking for recommendation approval to work on the limestone project, which Cam had worked on earlier. We got the approval last month to participate in the program. We are recommending that Place Road between twenty-six mile road and twenty-seven mile road, which is one point zero two miles, be looked at for the project. These are not absolute guarantees, but this is what we're asking for. Now, we've looked at the history of the charts, Place Road has not been touched between twenty-six and twenty-seven mile road. There has been no limestone put on that road since they started the project and the charting. The next section is going to be twenty-seven mile road from New Haven Road border, or the New Haven border, excuse me, to Frost Road. That is one point eight miles. There's been some discussion indication. We're not real sure if we can actually get the county to work with us for the additional from Frost to County Line. There's a lot going on there, and we ask you to please work with us and be favorable. We cannot fix this overnight, but we are with you one hundred percent in trying to get these roads. But we do not own these roads. We're going to do everything we can. This board has done a lot in participating and taking these calls, and we're looking forward to having you guys reach out to the county and let them know the issues and the problems we have, so we do have that prepared. But I'm going to bring it back to the board with those recommendations. The one point oh two and the one point eight will total out your three miles for the year. We may find something, Mr. Trombley may have something additional that comes up at the last minute. We, we have to look and stay in focus. We have different things that happen routinely. So our primary goal is the safety of the county, the residents of this township. At this point in time, I'll bring it back to the board for recommendations to move forward.
Thank you. With that, I'll make the motion to approve the recommendations of my office and the DPW superintendent to apply limestones in following roads. Place Road between twenty-six mile road and twenty-seven mile road, and twenty-seven mile road from the New Haven Village border to Frost Road.
Second.
I have a motion by the chair, seconded by trustee Gurley, may the deputy clerk, please call the roll.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Howl?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
All right, thank you, board. With that, we're going to move on to the next subject, planning G, or, excuse me, next subject is item G, planning commission appointments. This evening, we are recommending from the supervisor's office for two planning commission appointments. We recently moved forward last month, I believe, we enhanced the planning commission from five to seven members. With that being in place, we have two pieces, two positions that we're recommending seats be filled for partial terms. The first person that we're recommending this evening is Eric Sutton for a partial term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. The next person we have in front of us is Tanya Miler for a partial term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. We're asking to move forward and add these two folks to the planning commission since we have moved forward and enhanced it up to seven members at this point.
With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommendations of supervisor for the planning commission, Eric Sutton for a partial term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and Tanya Miler for a partial term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
There's no time for questions?
Go first, Mr. Graywell.
Well, in Mr. Sutton's, you, the, I know Miss Miler, I don't have a problem there, and I don't really have a problem with Mr. Sutton, but I don't know much about him at this time. The application was late on my desk, it wasn't late in my packet, I didn't, I'm reading it, and I'd like to know a little bit more about Mr. Sutton.
Mr. Sutton's been a resident of the community for twenty-five years. He's a project manager, high school throughout, there's a number of items here that we've been able to review and verify just in the background for making sure that we have, you know, recommendations of solid people before we bring them forward to you.
You just basically have to tell me what I can read here, Mark, but. Take your motion again, Mr. Reader.
I'll restate it. Motion to approve the recommendations of my office for the planning commission, Eric Sutton for a partial term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and Tanya Miler for a partial term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second.
I have a motion by the chair, seconded by treasurer Howl, may the deputy clerk, please call the roll.
Reader?
Aye.
Howl?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Item H, New Haven fireworks proposal request.
Good evening, board, once again, going to bring, bring this forward to you. This, this evening is a repeat request that we have done in the past. Last year, we had requested to participate with the New Haven Village, and I believe it was called Fun Fest?
It was the Independence Day celebration.
Independence Day celebration, thank you for the correction. With that, the village president has requested that we participate once again. Anne Crymore has reached out to the supervisor's office, requesting that we participate July eighth for the Fun Fest. The participation is required, ten thousand dollars. They are requesting and asking us to participate at fifty percent. The recommendation at this point in time is to approve a five thousand dollar amount to go towards the New Haven Village fireworks, as we've done in the past. Then I'll bring it back to the board.
I make a motion we approve the request that the village participate in the Independence Day, you call it, fireworks, two and five thousand dollars, and token to all residents, the fireworks shows, along with the festival. Those of you that haven't been there, it is a good show. With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion. I have a motion by trustee Clifford, seconded by the chair, may the deputy clerk, please call the roll.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Howl?
Aye.
Item passes. Item I, township, township seal contest, want your Mr. Graywell, please.
All right, good evening, board, once again. This evening, I'm bringing forward from the supervisor's office, a document that you have in front of you. At the regular meeting of June twenty-first, or, of twenty twenty-one, the board voted in favor of the authorized contest to be held for the redesign of the township seal. It was neglected at the last regular meeting that no winner was declared, as the submission from the New Haven is the only one that was actually submitted, New Haven schools, excuse me. Although we did not approve a final seal, we're asking that the supervisor's office allow the board to declare the submission from a New Haven student and be declared the winner of the seal and issue the grant prize of two hundred.
I'd like to clarify, this is just according to winner, this is not changing it. Pardon? This is just according to winner of the contest, this is not officially changing.
Does not change?
I do realize we committed two hundred dollars to the winner, not in fine of either submission, to just be blunt, but we do need to present the winner of the only submission two hundred dollars.
That, that, that is correct, that is just clerical work and cleanup so that we can complete this and move forward on this piece.
With that, I'll make the motion to approve the winner of the township seal contest and award the two hundred grand, two hundred dollar grant prize to the New Haven submission.
Second.
I have a motion by the chair, seconded by treasurer Howl, may the deputy clerk, please call the roll.
Reader?
Aye.
Howl?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Item J, extraction tool hydraulic hose purchase request, Mr. White.
Good evening, and, Mr. Supervisor, members of the board. This is an item we did place in our budget for, for this current fiscal year. It basically is replace the hydraulic hoses that run the extrication tools at the fire department. The hoses that are currently on the equipment are, now I think they're eleven years old, actually, we didn't get done last year, they're supposed to be replaced every ten years. Certainly, a hydraulic line is not something you want failing in the middle of the extrication or rescue operation, so our preventive maintenance companies recommend that we replace those. The total cost for all of the hoses, there's a total of four hoses, is four thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars. There is only one bid because they're, this kind of specialized piece of equipment, so you have to go to the vendor for that piece of equipment to get, or the manufacturer for that piece of equipment to get the whole, you just can't go and buy.
You allow for additional budget goes.
Yes, yes, this was, this was budgeted for this year.
You basically approved it in June. I make a motion we approve the purchase of the hoses.
The equipment's a cost of four thousand.
It's a basic cost.
I'll second that. I have a motion by trustee Clifford, supported by the chair, may the deputy clerk, please call the roll.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Howl?
Aye.
Item K, FDIC conference.
So the fire department currently owns a. So the fire department currently owns a, a fire engine, a pumper truck apparatus that is in excess now of 20 years old. It is time for it to be replaced. The NFPA recommends these trucks not be operated anything over 20 years old in structural firefighting, and this truck will be a little bit over that by the time we're able to get a replacement done. For the purpose of the folks that are here tonight, it's nice we have a good size group of residents, because they understand, you know, what these things can cost. A new fire truck, depending on what options it comes with, probably ranges anywhere between $600,000 and $1 million these days. That's just the cost of the going rate. And again, that depends a lot on what you spec out for, for your needs. So when you're building something that day, it's like constructing a building. It really isn't just like going to a dealership and, and buying something. We'll spend at the department probably the next 12 months actually developing the design, the blueprint for the vehicle, deciding what options we need and don't need as we move forward and try to stay within a reasonable budget for our residents for the replacement of this vehicle. This is money that we put away every year to do this in the budget, so Mr. Clifford always will ask all of us, he holds all of our department heads to a high standard, and he'll say, you get budgeted for this, we're thinking about it. And, and in fact, we think about it every year, so it gets budgeted for year after year after year until we build up funds enough to do this, so we won't be coming to the township for some large amount of money that goes to the bank, we'll be coming for eventual approval of the new truck. There is only one place in the country that I'm aware of, and it happens every year, it's not something you need to attend every year, but it happens every year in Indianapolis, it's called the FDIC convention that goes on at the Lucas Oil Stadium, where they bring in all of the vendors from around the country, probably one of the largest purchases the township makes in the next few years.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the public safety. I'll keep this side. The public safety's request for the fire chief and the assistant fire chief and the public director to attend the FDIC conference in Indianapolis, April 28th to 29th of 2022, and the cost is $75 per person, approximately $200 per room for meals and for the nights.
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Gerling, supported by treasurer Hallow. May the deputy clerk please call the roll?
Gerling?
Aye.
Hallow?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye. Thank you.
Now, they plan on closing the bridge on New Haven Road 28. They're rerouting traffic where? Down Place, down 29, down O?
Cam, and you guys, do we know that we're, we're there closing it?
They're closing it when? Is that?
They're closing it tonight.
I guess.
They're closing it today. There's a notice I received that closure's going to happen in the middle of this week. They did not supply a traffic plan to us for that work, but just knowing what's out there, Place Road, Elmo, and probably even Bates, didn't have an impression. Not a good time of the year to be pushed off on the sidewalks, as you share. So that being said, I would, I mean, even with my guys in the department, we are sticking on pavement as long as we can, even if it's a little bit further, we're making it.
Well, yeah, but you got to, you're able to do that, you're stuck.
But just like us, you may have to go a little bit further in order to get to the direction you're going, the timelines, you're still going to be better off. I, in fact, the roads are already beat up, they're going to be a beat-up road. And Frost just starting to come out. They're going to get a lot worse than they did then.
Kind of surprising that they haven't beat up the road and done anything compared to this.
For the construction project? And I'll use, I use part of section 27 mile road that is a tough shape right now. It's probably close to 10 years now, when they did the bridge on 26 mile road, they forced everybody to use 27, even more so than it does now. They destroyed that road after the first limestone application we put on that. That road's already had two limestone applications put on that, believe it or not.
Why don't they just think about lightening the load limit for the trucks, maybe that bridge alone?
Frost law's going to affect or form an effect this week. Now, as far as the overall load limits, we're talking state on that. They set those in, you know, what, in the country. That's what occurs with our manufacturing. Thank you.
Thank you, Cam.
This is some just general information in regards to if we're purchasing a dump truck and a fire truck as well. There's a website, GSA, where they can go and look at the different options that are available for both these type of trucks to, you know, piggyback and bundle together to save money.
House of the Board, if I may, I have a statement prepared. Tonight, we have heard a lot from our residents today, and the point is clear, the dirt roads are in terrible condition. Myself and Mr. Grayville have made numerous calls to the county road commission. I personally sent an email to the road commission, and they responded, and I quote, "We don't usually attend board meetings," after asking them to be present tonight to hear your concern, and that they would also reach back to us after the fact. I understand the frustra, the frustration and anger of every single person in this room is feeling. I spent 22 years of my life growing up on dirt roads, and never have I seen them in this bad of a condition. Today, we also received two phone calls from Macomb County after I sent the email to the executive's office. One was from the road commission, and one was from the executive's office. They both stressed that the roads are under their jurisdiction and that the residents should call them directly. We clearly understand that the ditches must be cleaned and the roads graded properly for drainage. We have expressed this with them and made it clear that we, as well as you, the residents, are all angry at this. They urge that all residents reach, reach out to them via phone or online at macombgov.org. So I urge every single one of you to call them at 586-463-8671. We have the phone numbers as well as their emails on little sheets of paper on that table back there. Thank you.
I was part of a board a couple of years ago that we went to war, right in this room, didn't work, referred to us, and we took legal action. Everything we could, we tried to sue, we did everything. It didn't work. It's got to come from all of us. You guys have all voiced your opinion, whether or not you reelect us or not, depending on how this turns out, this is not our fault. We have fought this vehemently, and we sat there, this, it got ugly, I thought I was going to have to break a fight up, but we need to all bomb with phone calls. That's all I can tell you.
We need your help, too.
We're doing, we're going to do all we can, we are doing all we can to supervise this office.
That's why we're here tonight.
We're all going to work together. That's right.
On those little sheets of paper, there is a phone number with a direct line to the county executive's office, as well as his email as well. I'm the one that put the sign up on 27 mile, tell everyone you called. Every five minutes doesn't matter, call, call every five minutes. Get, get to where there's openness enough out, like they're going to, because they're sitting there, you have to hire 10 people to make, answer phone calls. If everybody can't respond to calls every day, they're going to have to hire more people just to answer phone calls to work this out.
That's taken two days made earlier, that was made to me two years ago. We own the roads, not you guys. So you throw your pencil across the table and say, we'll own them. Own them.
And I live, I live on one of those dirt roads. Excuse me, I live on those dirt roads also, and I have called, and I have said that I am, I sit on the board, and it makes no difference to them. They, they, like he said, they own the roads, and, you know, I could be, it doesn't matter who I am, they don't, it's their, it's their roads, and I can say I'm a trustee, I live on this dirt road, I drive it every day, three, four times a day, and so do my kids, but it doesn't matter. I just, you just got to keep calling.
Can I just ask a quick question?
I wish they had public meetings. I wish they did.
Do you, and I appreciate you mentioning that greatly. Was not trying to toss out any ill statements, as you can see the frustration kind of came out. That being said, do you know, and I can always research it myself, does the Macomb County road commission have a set schedule for when they do work on certain portions of this township, of their cities, of their roads? Is it pre-planned? Is it like, okay, there's a schedule, so we do this, we do that, we do, like with this road closure with the bridge, how long was that planned? And I'm not asking you for an answer, it's kind of a rhetorical question, but how long did they know that that was going to occur? You know, in order for people like us to bring it up more than a week before it's about to happen? So I was just curious, if you knew by chance, and again, I can call them.
I formally worked there, and they had, but I, don't yell, don't, don't beat me up, I worked at traffic signals, I was an electrician. But they did, they did have, or they, at that time now, I left there in 2003. They did have a, a program, there would be so much ditching done this time, you know, certain times of the year, they had, obviously had to deal with emergencies with snow, so much gravel road work, so much, you know, that kind of thing, so much, you know, and you had state highways to maintain on their budget. There was many facets to that, but they did have a type of program, and I believe they still do, I don't know what it is, but I knew what my budget was, what I had to do with the good traffic signals was affordable, but I didn't totally stay on top of that, you know, I was, I was a guy plowing snow, and the guys ran out of hours, but it's, they did have a program.
I mean, it can't be arbitrary, we'll go work on 23 mile road today, or we'll go work on 27 mile road. I would think they have something kind of in the works this week.
They do tend to prioritize paved roads more than dirt roads.
Sure.
That goes later on that.
Are the, are the light bulbs or the rear that we're getting for our vehicle?
I do not know that answer.
He's got it.
May I ask one question? Since they're not looking upon, they're just looking at doing it to Frost, okay, and they would do from Grasham to Frost, say.
It'll be from the New Haven, there's a little in-between.
Yeah, which is like Grasham to Frost, somewhere in that area. My suggestion is, is maybe put out a letter to everybody on 27 mile, because we drive from Oakley from full size, okay? Maybe you can figure out how much it's going to cost to do from Frost to County Line and say, hey, every homeowner, if you want to just get the whole road done, it might cost you $200 each that live on the road, just for the gravel, the county will pay for the rest. You know, I don't mind helping out, but I'm sure the rest of the people that live on that road would not, Blake and I are paying $200 to not destroy their vehicles, because the place across the county, County Line, it gives that too.
Well, the worst part of the road.
Yeah, and so I'm sure, I mean, if you guys put a letter out or something and said, hey, you know, it's going to cost $25 in gravel, just so money, or so much, you're coming, so pay for so much of it, you guys are paying for so much of it, if you want to get it done, help us out, we'll get it done. We, we probably, you know, if we get everybody together that lives on the whole street and ditches some money, let's just get the whole thing done, instead of just putting advantage on three quarters of it. I mean, it could be a suggestion to bring up on either in what your means or just look at the budget. I don't mind forking out a couple hundred bucks or whatever, or even putting it in our taxes.
Well, I, I do have a problem in the sense that we're already paying for the service.
Yeah.
Why do we have to ask you guys off to two or three, whatever, what idea?
I, I know, but if, just to get the end part done, if they only do two miles or three miles a year, it might be five years till they get that whole area done, and it shouldn't cost that much to do it. So I know we pay our taxes, do everything.
But we are on the route to the problem, it's alongside the edge of the road, it's not so much what's up top.
If they, if they get the ditches flowing, get the ditches done, I've already proved without that, that's the main, that's the first problem, is we have to get the ditches cleared. I got them to clear all the debris two years ago, and from, and 27 mile's staying good for probably two quarters of the year, until they started building up the side of the road again, because they don't really know how to break, and they started filling in the ditches again, into water, and the water wasn't, oh, the water wasn't going back into the ditches, so all the water sits in the street and destroys the street. But they need to first get rid of the water, and the road will last.
And I've done, I've been dealt with this every year in the six years I've been in my office. It just, we get the same rhetoric when you own the roads.
They did 25 mile off last year, the ditches, and that's where I'm at over there, and I drive down here three, four times a month, and the road is a lot better since they did the ditches, I'll tell you. They probably grade it once every two months now, instead of once a week like ours.
But when they grade it, they're only putting dirt down, and as soon as it rains, the dirt turns to mud.
They do a dirt rating. They, they grade our road in the rain.
Right, but they're dumping dirt, they're not dumping natural.
They're dumping, they're dumping, which is like a mix, mix, it's not a solid block that's.
Actually, 23A.
23A? Yeah, it has, it has too much pine, so it's going to wash away as soon as you turn around.
Or, yeah, two different.
You know, after the first couple hours of actually grading it, all this back.
They had to chip, chip the tires and tires because of like.
Oh, wow.
Dry mud, I couldn't even, yeah.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn it, adjourn it in 01. Second.
All in favor? Aye. This meeting is adjourned.